Welcome to the two. What? Is that good, better? Thank you. Welcome to the Tuesday, October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Mass General Law allows for remote participation at public meetings until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded and aired live on LCTV. School committee members, when I call your name, please stay here for the record. Nicole?
Here.
Kate?
Here.
Emily?
Here.
Zach?
Here.
And I'm here, and we're, we just don't have Jamie and Adam tonight. Alright, so next, what do we need to say? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart. Correspondents?
Certainly. An email entitled "Exchange Student Enrollment CIEE," dated September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, sent by Renee Ostrzen. An email titled "A Big Thank You," dated September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, sent by Shelley Baron. Email titled "Glenbrook Idea for Your Thoughts," dated October first, two thousand twenty-five, sent by Link. An email titled "Public Correspondence Request to Restore Access to Extracurricular Activities," dated October sixth, sent by Amber Johnson.
Next on our agenda is public speak. It doesn't look like we have anyone in the room here tonight for public speak. Is there anyone remote that would like to participate in the public speak portion of our school committee meeting? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, I don't think we have anyone here tonight for public speak. We also don't have any business with guests, so we're gonna move right along to the school committee announcements and recognitions. So, I just want to, since our last meeting, we've passed the middle school vote, and so I just want to say a big thank you to the community and all the stakeholders, including the school administrators, the middle school building committee, and everyone that worked to pass that. And it's a really exciting time to move forward in the design phase of, you know, creating the best learning environment in the new middle school for all the students. And I know at the last SEAL meeting, which is the Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow, that Dr. O'Shea and Nicole Paris-Crow had an opportunity to speak with some of the parents and stakeholders in the special ed community about the planning and programming for the new middle school, which is really exciting. That's all I really have. Does anyone else have any other announcements or recognitions?
I'd just echo a huge thank you to everyone who came out in the community to support this project. It's been a lot of new faces to me and a lot of work from a lot of different corners, and just really appreciate everybody putting so much energy and effort into getting this project through to the next step. Thank you.
Alright, so superintendent report?
Sure, yes, it did. So grateful to all the folks that, that came out to support the project. And I would even say, you know, there's still a lot of work in front of us. And to those that have some concerns about the project, I'd say we want to continue to stay engaged and address the concerns that are out there. We, we still have a lot of work to do. And the design development stage will take many, many months. And it will prepare us to hopefully break ground in the summer of two thousand twenty-six and open in the fall of two thousand twenty-eight. So we'll continue to stay engaged with the wider community. In fact, I think this month or next, we have a meeting with the Energy and Sustainability Committee to talk about some of the sustainable features of the project. So our work will continue to be one where we're staying engaged with community members and town boards and town committees to be sure that we're, we're continuing to shape the design and be responsive to all the feedback that we get that's out there. So, and thanks to this school committee for its active support of the project. It would not have happened without the combined leadership of the school committee, working closely with the select board and the finance committee and so many other town entities. So it, it, you don't often see that in many communities, to see that consistent support across all the governing bodies. So that was, that was great for us to see. So, I have a few other items. I'm sorry, I was kinda getting carried away with the building project. We, just before this meeting, the school committee had an opportunity to meet with our administrative team. And I'm appreciative that the school committee gave the administrators some time and space to, to talk about the things that are important to them, the opportunities for growth, the challenges that they face. And it was also a time for them to hear from the committee about some of the things that were important to the school committee. So it's an annual event for us to carve out some time, dedicated time, purposeful time for the school committee and administrators to get together, talk about some, some shared concerns. And so thank you to the committee for making that time for our administrative team. I thought it was very productive and hopefully will be a foundation, foundational conversation for your goals conversation tonight. Couple items, just, and some of these you heard about earlier from our administrators in the area of curriculum and instruction. We launched our new professional development committee. Its first meeting was on September twenty-fifth. It's a committee that will have representatives from each of our schools. And Dr. Nelson is leading that group as our Director of Curriculum and Instruction. MCAS scores were released at the state, school, and individual student level reports. Individual reports went home with students last week. And we're ready and prepared to do a report and presentation to the school committee at your next meeting or an upcoming meeting if that is of interest. And Dr. Nelson also is proud that we have recently initiated a partnership with the National Center on Improving Literacy. We have sort of brought the science of reading and our understanding of high-quality instructional materials to the elementary level. And we're gonna continue that conversation with our middle educators this year, so we're excited about that work. McCall mentioned the opportunity we had to meet with the Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow. Last week was a great opportunity to talk about the instruction and the support spaces available in the new school to students with disabilities. The Say Something Anonymous Reporting System, we have reactivated our commitment to that anonymous reporting system. Our administrators had a meeting with the program administrators last week. And so it is there as a tool for families and students to report anonymously on anything ranging from bullying to student conflict to urgent life safety matters. So that's the Say Something Anonymous Reporting System. As this committee knows, bullying prevention and intervention is an important part of our district improvement plan. Our entire administrative team, principals, central office admin, and assistant principals got together to engage in a refresher course last week. That was directed by Nazir Azari, so thankful to her for pulling that together. And also, the committee is invited to Long Meadow High School on October thirtieth, where the ADL will formally designate Long Meadow High School as a No Place for Hate School. So there'll be a small ceremony after school. We'll unveil a banner designating that status as a No Place for Hate School. Again, very much in keeping with our, our district goal of addressing hate and bias and bullying in all of our schools. And finally, in the area of facility and operations, we have a district safety meeting on Thursday. Our district safety team includes DPW, police, fire, school administrators, central office admin. And so Mr. Mazza coordinates our agenda for that meeting. But it will be a good time for us to debrief on the recent lockdown at Long Meadow High School. So that's an important meeting coming up. And then finally, the town manager has initiated the capital planning process. And as we do each year, we will come to the committee with a recommendation for a capital plan submission by the school committee. So if you have any thoughts or ideas on that, you can be in touch with Mr. Mazza or I. I'm not sure off the top of my head what the timeline on that is, if we have another month or so.
Yeah, we usually submit it early November, so it might be in our next meeting packet for school committee review.
Okay, that's it.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments about the superintendent report? Really excited about the literacy initiative.
Of course.
Okay, LPV EC?
Haven't met since, we're meeting tomorrow night.
We don't meet again till November.
Okay, awesome. SEAL, as has been mentioned, there was a really great meeting this month already. And next month, the meeting is on Wednesday, November twelfth. And it's a virtual workshop with the Federation of Children with Special Needs. And it's about understanding your basic rights as a parent and a student and understanding the IEP. It's always really informative, usually run by an advocate that works for that organization. And it's always a well-attended conference or workshop. And a lot of questions get asked. And so anyone who has any questions about IEPs or the process or your rights, 504s too, it's a really good meeting to attend.
With the recent news coming out of the Department of Education, are they going to address what that might mean for funding related to IEPs and 504s?
I'm sure that will probably be a topic that comes up.
Yeah, hope so.
Yes, me too. Okay, energy and sustainability.
So we met October ninth. Most of the meeting we spent talking about the climate action plan that we want to develop for the town over the next twelve to eighteen months. We've been looking at climate action plans from other towns in Massachusetts. Each of us kind of looked at one or two towns to see how they drafted their climate action plan, what groups were involved in creating those plans, so how they coordinated with different groups in town. And that could be citizen committees, or that could be like our, you know, public works or our school committees. So we're kind of planning out what the sections are gonna be and who needs to be involved in helping us to draft those sections. So most of the meeting we spent talking about the structure around that. The only other thing of note is that the committee still wants to draw attention to car idling, but we haven't really finalized details yet on the awareness campaign for that. One member is gonna talk to the chief of police about education and outreach in the community and see if they can maybe involve the police in helping with that, that education. They're leaning towards distributing flyers or having signs that they can hold up in the car lines just to educate parents on car idling and the impacts to not only our environment, but our kids' health. And our next meeting is November thirteenth.
Great, thank you, Emily. Student representative report?
Yeah, so next week, we have a really busy week. We have Spirit Week Monday through Friday, so that'll really get people excited and connected for the busy week ahead. Monday, starting off, is the College Fair for eleventh and twelfth graders, which will be in the cafeteria. And I, I've been last year, and I found it really helpful just to learn about colleges and, so especially for eleventh graders, like to get them thinking about it. So that'll be on Monday. And then Tuesday is the Chamber Concert, which will be at seven PM in SMA. And then Thursday is the Homecoming Dance, which will be seven to nine in the gym. It's very well advertised. I know a lot of people are going and are really excited for it, so I think that'll be a big event. And then Friday will be the pep rally, which I know the pep rally committee has been working really hard on. And that's usually a really fun event that's been happening for a few years now that I know. Will definitely be great. And then Saturday is the Key Club Spooktacular. I'm on the Key Club Board too, and this is one of our best events. It's a really long tradition. And we get a lot of kids to come and trick or treat. And we have scares to scare them, and it gets all, the school is all decorated, and it's definitely a fun event. And then, again, the No Place for Hate Ceremony will be on the thirtieth at two fifteen in S B. And then the thirty-first quarter one ends. That's it.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Okay, subcommittee reports. Curriculum Subcommittee?
Only, we've lined up a meeting for Wednesday, October twenty-second, and that's at seven o'clock. So we'll get an invite out. I think that date seemed to work for most members, if not all members of the Curriculum Subcommittee. And if you have some agenda items, I think we collected some feedback from the committee already. So we'll pull that agenda together.
And then Evaluation Subcommittee?
Thursday, October sixteenth, that's at four o'clock. So my intention would be to have a draft of an annual plan for you at that, at that meeting. And then take some feedback from the Evaluation Sub and then put it together for a final draft for the review by the full committee at your October twenty-eighth meeting. No, twenty-eighth, twenty-eighth, yes.
Finance Subcommittee?
Oh, we haven't met until the end of next week, but there is a item in your packet for consideration. It is the list of subsidiary accounts for our student activity fund for the middle and high school. Basically, is a list of active accounts that will operate in fiscal year twenty-six, highlighting accounts that are new for this fiscal year. And under the high school and middle school, there are some accounts that are being inactivated because they are no longer operational. Those that have funds, the balance are being distributed to subsidiary accounts that have a negative balance as of June thirtieth to help decrease that negative balance. And students will be able to benefit by those funds being transferred there. So it is an action we take every fall to authorize the use of the subsidiary accounts for the fiscal year.
Does anyone have any questions or comments or recommended motions?
I move that the school committee approve the Long Meadow Student Activity Subaccounts as presented.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so any other comments, questions? Kate?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
And a yes for me too. So now we're on to Policy Subcommittee, and we actually met, oh, go ahead, Nicole. Are you the junior?
No, I'm not, I'm not even on Policy.
Oh. Oh, Adam.
Yeah, I'm happy to take it.
Oh, it's fine, yeah.
So at your last meeting, you had an opportunity to review some language that had been recommended collaboratively by the Mass Association of School Committees, the, our own attorney from Murphy Hesse, Tilly Lehane, and the Mass Association of School Superintendents. So collaboratively, they had offered some important handbook language. This wouldn't have to reside in the school committee's policy manual, but because it's handbook language, it would require the approval of the school committee. And the intention of this language, there's a copy of it in your packet, is just to simply make it clear what and how curriculum accommodations might be available where appropriate, particularly in matters where there's objections to curriculum based on religious orientation. And so the language that has been suggested to us is simply consistent with Mass Regulations, six oh three CMR, twenty-six point zero five, section one. The Long Meadow Public Schools, through its curriculum materials, encourage respect for the human and civil rights of all individuals, regardless of race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, or sexual orientation. In accordance with district guidelines, families may request information from the building principal on available accommodations related to curriculum content. So it's really to sort of tighten up our handbook on how those curriculum accommodations might be accessed. And, you know, the true, I would say, this language really is reflective of the practice that's been in place for a long time in Long Meadow Public Schools, where if families have concerns about the content of curriculum, we engage proactively with families just to understand what their concerns are and make sure they understand the intention of the, of the unit or the lesson or the materials. So that's for the consideration of the committee.
Does anyone have any questions or comments about this policy or anything?
I move on the recommendation that the school committee approve and support Long Meadow Public Schools to adopt the statement as presented to be included in both the K eight handbook and the LHS student handbook.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Emily?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And a yes for me too.
Sorry. I just appreciate the extra information on how does this kind of reinforcing practice that already exists and clarifying in the handbook where what families might need to know if they have questions about curriculum.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, new business, school committee goals.
So the committee had submitted through a Google forum some suggestion for goals for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And so the copy of each individual committee member's submission is available in your packet, but took the liberty of drafting a set of goals that I think represent a synthesis, distillation of the individual goals that we received from committee members. And so you'll find in your packet, agenda item eleven A, draft Long Meadow School Committee Goals, twenty-five, twenty-six. It's reflective of the input that we received from individual committee members. We might need a few minutes just to review this as it is sort of hot off the presses. So hopefully, each individual committee member sees their own submissions reflected in this global document.
Does anyone have any comments or questions? Just wanna discuss these. Nicole?
I think it looks great. I'm wondering if, since we were able to meet with our administrators today, if it might be helpful to push voting on this to next meeting so that we can kind of review and see if there are any places where we can build out a little bit more detail based on some of the conversations that we had today. That might be, especially since I know we had some notes that we took during those, those discussions, an opportunity to kind of see where those line up and what we might be able to focus our goals on. But it'll look good.
Does anyone else?
Could we, the first one, the second bullet point, add diversity in there? Diversity, equity, inclusion, cultural responsiveness? The first, curriculum instruction, and the second bullet?
I'm sure that instruction and materials promote equity, inclusion, diversity, and cultural.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Is this, do, do you agree with Nicole and wanna wait and put off what we, like, put in what we talked about today to our next meeting?
I don't see a problem with that.
Okay, that's fine with me too.
I think today's discussion with the administrators and for me to see the individual responses of the individual committee members is sort of enough for me to sort of shape my annual plan, plus I have the feedback from last year's evaluation as well. So I think unless, unless your quick review of this suggests that we're, it feels like it's, lines up with the discussions that we had earlier and the feedback that we got from individual committee members. So I don't see a problem with waiting until your next meeting.
It does at first glance look like it lines up, by the way.
Yeah.
It'd be days sort of really.
Are there priorities? I mean, it's sort of laid out, you know, the curriculum, the policy, the finance and operations. Is there one, and then the community engagement? Is there, out of those five topics or four topics, do we prioritize or emphasize one over others or?
I mean, in my opinion, a lot of these are interconnected.
Yeah.
You know, even our conversations today, facilities came up in every single group, and that wasn't lost on me. And I know I was trying to incorporate that in some other, like, that's underneath the umbrella of finance and operations, but like, what kind of whole-child outcomes can you have if you don't have a learning environment with updated facilities?
I guess that's what was top of my mind when I asked the question.
Yeah, so I think that they're all tied in. And I think, yeah, just maybe giving it a little more thought into how our conversations with the administrators tie into also.
How has the school committee measured achievement or growth towards these goals in the past?
That's a good question.
I'd say, I've seen committees sort of have an end of year wrap-up where they just sort of, you know. I, I think the goals, as I've seen them over the years, they tend to be directional as opposed, and they're, and they're reflective of the consensus of the committee as opposed to goals that are, you know, have discrete measurements tied to it. I'm not saying you couldn't do that, but I think they are meant to point us as an administrative team in a certain direction, you know? Or, or point me as a superintendent in a certain direction. So I'd say you certainly could spend some time thinking about ways to measure these. But I think it's the directional nature of them that, that I've found to be really valuable.
I think that's true. There are, there are goals in here where there would be something we would wanna check against. Like if we say we want to establish a policy for this thing, we need to check off that we've established that policy. My recommendation would be for us to pick out any of the goals where there is something tangible that should, that an outcome that should be created as a result of that goal. And then making sure that we have check-in points. It could be halfway through the year to say, have, have we done this yet? Is that still something we need to do? So we don't lose sight of these goals before the end of the year.
Yeah, that's a good idea. And I think too, part of, like, back to the whole, I think a lot of them, like, the curriculum review cycle and the policy, I've sat on the Policy Subcommittee for, this is my third year, and we're always, if something is released from Massachusetts Association of School Committees, we're meeting and, and reflecting on that change. And so that, like, continuous monitoring and review is kind of like important in all areas too. I actually, like, planning for these, looked at about twenty different school districts, school committees, and read their goals. And some school committees don't even set their own goals. They really actually use the district's strategic plan and goals and align their work to that. And that's where I think we kind of get in this process in the fall where it's like, well, this is what administrators are saying, this is what the goals of the school district are gonna be, how does that align with our roles and responsibilities?
To support us.
Yeah. That's your questions?
I'm done.
Okay, so we'll just wait until our next meeting.
Not a problem.
Okay, now we have some building use requests.
Yes, tonight, there is a consented agenda item, including three building use requests. The first is submitted from the, for the Raise of Hope for Use of the High School Parking Lot on October nineteenth, from seven AM to four PM, as part of the Raise a Hope Walk over at Forest Park. The second request is from the Long Meadow Youth Basketball Association for use of the gym at Glenbrook on various dates on Saturday, starting on December sixth, running through February fourteenth, from eight AM to six thirty PM. This is a annual request that we get from the basketball association. And the third request is from the National Multiverse Schooliosis Society for use of the high school cafeteria and parking lot for a walk on Sunday, May third, from six AM to two PM. Again, this is a annual request for use of space to support their walk.
Does anyone have any questions or discussion about the consent agenda? And if, if there's anything you want out of the consent agenda to talk about? Otherwise, we're gonna vote on them all together. And we can have a recommended motion.
I move that the school committee approve the consent agenda for the October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, school committee meeting as presented. There is no discussion of items on a consent agenda. If a committee member would like one or more items on the consent agenda discussed, the committee would have to vote to remove the items from the consent agenda.
Does anybody wanna second that motion or?
Second.
Second DQ? Emily?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And a yes for me too. So next on the agenda is. So next on the agenda is middle school building project.
No, no major updates since the successful vote on September 30th. The design team has begun to really purposely engage our staff at Glenbrook and Williams. So on November 3rd and 4th, the design team will be at each school to meet with teachers who have very specialized classrooms with specialized furniture and equipment. And then we're also in the process of putting together a design advisory group where sort of a representative group of teachers can advise the design team on some of the more universal aspects of the, of furniture, pictures, and equipment across the school building. So that's for staff. And then there'll be additional opportunities for the middle school building committee and for community members and various town public committees. So that engagement will, is continuing. So that's it.
Thank you for the update. It's really exciting to get these updates.
This is, it's been, it's been a great ride, labor love for all of us. But to really dive into the design work is very exciting.
Does anyone have any questions about the middle school building project? Okay, so now on our agenda is our executive session.
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A. Purpose, two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for collective bargaining sessions with units B, D, E, F, and non-union personnel. And three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. And seven, approval of minutes to not reconvene into open session.
Do you have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Kate? Emily?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And a yes for me too. So that ends our meeting for tonight. Thank you, have a good evening.